Welcome to the Bradenton City Council Meeting on Wednesday, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at eight thirty a.m. At this time, we'll ask for our Pastor Don Steriano with Kingdom Life Christian Church to give us our invocation and then we'll do the pledge.
Would you bow your heads, please? Heavenly Father, thank you that your mighty hand of power and grace is upon this beautiful city. I pray for each of our city leaders that your abundant blessings would be upon every area of their lives and their families. Protect them and guide them and strengthen them. Keep them and remind each of them that they are loved, significant, needed, honored, and made in your image. May the revelation that they are truly your sons and daughters would strengthen their hearts, their minds, and their soul. I declare over every cherished employee the same and the citizens of our friendly city. I pray for today's council meeting that wisdom would be their rudder, your will would be their compass, and their love for the city and its people would be the fuel that propels them to the destinations of their decision. I pray where there is diversity in opinion, the spirit of unity and honor and kindness and compassion would be their bond of harmony. I pray that they would rule with the heart of a servant and serve with the heart of a king. I declare your glorious kingdom to come and your perfect will to be done in the beautiful city of Bradenton as it is in heaven, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join us with all veterans on this Flag Day to say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Don. Madam, uh, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We do not have any proclamations or presentations scheduled this morning.
And we're at the citizen comment portion. A citizen comment will be accepted during the citizen comment portion of the meeting on any non-agenda item, agenda item, future agenda item, or topic of relevance to the city. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings at the appropriate time. Seeing I have no comments, we will move on to consent agenda.
Correct. Staff is requesting approval of items A through U.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll start the vote in Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three. Absent. Four.
Yes.
All right, carries four to zero. Councilman Kramer is out unexcused absence. All right. All right, moving on. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance four zero one one. An ordinance of the city of, excuse me, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending chapter twenty-two, article three of the Code of Ordinances entitled Vacation Rentals. Amending section twenty-two dash fifty-one to amend the definition of vacation rental. Amending section twenty-two dash fifty-two subsection A to extend the deadline for obtaining a certificate of registration, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is set for July twenty-sixth.
Okay. Mr. Rudesel, anything else we need to do or just move it forward to that date?
No, Mr. Mayor, it's a first reading. Happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
All right, any questions? All right, moving forward. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is under new business code enforcement initiatives.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Elmo ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Morning, Mayor, Council. I just want to give an update on, on code enforcement and what Mr. Ace has kind of been up to and some activities and a couple of issues that have been important. I'm gonna show you from the overhead some data from May, and I thought this was important to report, which is basically the number of code, code enforcement inspections that were conducted. So we start to get some metrics and, uh, yeah, sorry, a little bit out of focus there. I need to enlarge it.
That's pretty good for old eyes.
So much better, thank you.
Thank you. So there we, we see basically four hundred and ninety-four inspections that were conducted by our code enforcement department. Outside storage is the largest category and it goes down obviously in the common type of categories. I can have Volker probably give a quick overview on the activities of May in this chart if you could briefly.
These are initial inspections.
Can you state your name and just for the record?
Volker Reis, I'm the compliance manager for the city of Bradenton.
Thank you.
These are initial inspections. These are not re-inspections. We do a whole set of re-inspections, of course, too. You can see the, how many complaints we get and how many proactive inspections we do. And I kind of put it in a bar chart, in a, in a pie chart so you can see it. You can see our violation types. It's, it's, it's not surprising that outside storage is a, is a big deal for us. It's a kind of a low hanging fruit. It, it has a big impact if people clean up their yards. It, it's just a, a, a quick fix to, to a problem. Permit checks are when we check if somebody has a, a permit to do work. So that's a big deal for us, too. And it's one of the reasons why we would like, why we proposed another code enforcement officer in the budget for next year because it's, it's a big deal and we could do more. It's, uh, permit checks are important because if people do work without a permit, in addition to the safety issue that may come up in, in the future, it's also unfair to people who have a permit, to contractors who, who do work without a permit. Miscellaneous is a little bit of a catch-all for all sorts of stuff that weird things we get. And then you can go down, you see the exterior. In the, in the future, we're gonna break that down a little bit more because right now it's everything from paint to, to roofs and windows. And if you go down the, uh, the line, no water is a little one, oversized vehicle. Interior of a structure is of course an issue for us because we don't get on the interior, uh, in the interior of a structure because we have to be let in. So it's not a, it's not, so you, it's just a, you can see and knock yourself out with it. Junk vehicles is, is a word for junk vehicles.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions on some comments that I've got from citizens and different things, probably for you, Mr. Reese. So if somebody had built a building and it was landscaped and painted and looked nice, and then the landscaping, you know, years had gone by, somebody else buys the building, all the landscaping is torn out, and then, and there was kind of a cornices and different things on the building that were torn off, and then they occupy the building now, the new people occupy, but it looks in disrepair. Is that a code enforcement or is that, you know, because again, when you do the landscaping at the beginning, there's a plan. And you, before you open, you, before you get a C.O., you have to have that plan in place. So is there any consistency that you have to kind of keep up? Doesn't have to look exactly like it did, but it has to still be in, in good repair instead of looking like, you know, it's a shuttered building.
Well, there are two items with that. The landscaping needs to be maintained either according to the approved landscaping plan or the general regulations that the city has. In fact, we have done a couple of months ago on Cortez Road and Manatee Avenue with the county addressed landscaping violations. They asked us, they, they were addressing landscaping violations in the county along the corridors and they asked us to tie in, so we did that. Yes, there is an issue we have. It's a, it, it's, it's difficult sometimes because you have an approved landscaping plan from eighteen years ago and now landscaping has changed. So we kind of, at that point, may not tell them to go back to the original, but it needs to be maintained. You can't have any dead plans and hedges have to be maintained, of course. The second part is any building has to be maintained on the exterior and we enforce that. I mean, if you look at the exterior of a structure, we have a, it's, it's our fourth biggest item that we deal with every month.
All right, good. And then the other question is, and this comes down to, I've got several in the last few weeks, comments from people in general neighborhoods, not, you know, in retail or, or commercial type situations. But people are coming in and, and using the different forums to rent their homes and they're bringing boats with them and they're putting them in the driveway overnight, leaving during the day, and then back in the afternoon. But they're in the driveway hooked up to the car and it's on a consistent basis. And, you know, mostly they're the Airbnbs, VRBOs and different things, and they're actually advertising to that. And one of them, I got several pictures somebody had sent me where there's two boats in the driveway, hooked the two trucks with two cars in front of it. And, uh, you know, the one, cars are sticking out in the road a little bit because they can't fit all in the driveway. And it's one of those roads that we have that is a narrow road that you can't park on the street because you'd block the street with one car, basically. So I don't know if we, and it's weekends, so that, the reason I'm bringing that up is, is there anything on policy with that?
Yes, as you could see, it's not a, 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 one of our greatest, greatest hits, but it's boat in front yard. I would encourage people who do that, maybe in, in addition to calling you, calling us, so we can take action. If it's on the weekend, we still, you know, we, we still take action. We, you cannot keep a boat in your driveway or in your front yard. You can have it there to clean it up, to load it up, and if you bring it back on a Monday and it's gone on Tuesday, that's fine. But you can't keep it there. It's not a, if you don't have enough room on your property for a boat in your side yard or in your backyard, you know, you can't put ten pounds of sugar in a five pound bag.
This is probably one of the rentals that advertises, you know, bring your boat because you're close to the water and, and it's consistent. So I think that's something.
Bring your boat and leave it in the water.
Um, ma'am?
Yes, I saw Mrs. Barnaby's first and then Mrs. Moore. Okay.
Perhaps on this very specific issue, because we are, we did have the first reading today dealing with vacation rentals. Perhaps we should ask the city attorney to see if we could craft some info, something to go in here that basically says, should a renter bring watercraft? Because I've, I've had complaints about people that have brought jet skis. And the jet skis and the cars don't fit in the, in the driveway, so they're hanging out in the street kind of thing. Is there anything that we might be able to put into the vacation rental information so that we're trying to deal with it proactively rather than pass this, set this up, and then suddenly start dinging people with code enforcement?
I think it's already in there. And it, don't all vehicles have to be parked in the driveway or something?
Yeah, but you, you're not allowed to keep watercraft in your front yard, front driveway.
Before Mr. Rudesel.
Yep. Yeah, Miss Moore, she wants to say something?
Well, because my question was pretty much exactly Miss Barnaby's, but taking it a step further, not just specifying the boats, because I think the issue is that because it's a vague, short-term rental, it's constantly rotating. So by the time Mr. Reese is able to get out to deal with, you know, renter number one's boat, renter number two, you know, that's already gone. So maybe there's something that Mr. Rudesel can help us craft that has more spec, or more general, if the terms of your rental are consistently violating some kind, you know, in other words, putting it on the landlord versus that one specific instance of code enforcement violation, so that they cannot encourage continued bad behavior.
And I agree with that, and I don't want to get to where we're trying to discourage these because it's not something that, that we want, but we also have, with its neighborhoods. You know, and the whole goal of this was not to, to shut down or overburden the cost of what we're doing, but it was to basically have some security if there was an issue that we would be able to, to, uh, monitor it in a way that we could help neighbors. Because I, I think everybody now is affected by it in this room, whether it's across the street from your house, whether it's next to your house, whether you're getting phone calls on it. And we've seen some areas where there has been bigger issues. And, and we also have an area in our town that I think is being very overburdensome cost-wise. That's coming out that it hasn't hit yet, that when you hear about it, when they're charging upwards of close to a thousand plus more dollars for some of the, the companies, it's going to be very onusome. And that's why there was a legislative ban on some of it, which I think will come back next year. So.
What?
But, yeah, ban on, on us regulating. So I got, Mrs., is, was that all Miss Moore, all Miss Barnaby?
Yes, it, it follows along the same thing. I, I think that the, just to piggyback, I think that the more appropriate way to deal with that kind of thing is that vacation rental. Or it might need some tweaking, I agree, is basically where I was going with that.
All right, Ms. Coachman and then Ms. Coker?
Um, I have some comments and questions, not on the, you know, Airbnb rentals and so forth right now. But I heard you refer to the low hanging fruit and I totally agree with you that if those things are taken care of, it, it, you see a big difference. I, the, the concerns I get from different citizens is they feel like they're being picked on, you know, for their grill being outside of the house. And then they look across the street and there are these houses that are somewhat boarded up and occupied by people and all kinds of not so great things they're doing. Uh, so they kind of feel like, get that, get that first, you know, to them that makes a big difference. But if, is it possible that we could ride around my ward together and you can tell me where we are on some of the things? I know there are a lot of areas that are in foreclosure and we're doing the process. I just kind of want to know where we are.
I, I'd recommend that you do exactly that. I, I did that when I first came in with Mike Magnus and it was, it was eye-opening. And, and, and also it, it kind of specifically, I think if you have a counselor who's very familiar with the ward, the people in the ward, the issues of the ward, it's helpful to understand the specific maybe occurrences in that ward as well as how it's handled by code enforcement. And if it isn't by formal policy, by more informality, uh, uniqueness of the ward. And, and I agree, you and I had this conversation. I think it's tough when someone comes from the city and says, uh, your grill is in your side yard and the neighbors can see it. So please move it and if you don't, I'll have to issue a citation. And you would say, but there was a shooting there or there's police activity in the house across the street. Why don't you deal with that first? And, and, and I think I would frankly probably feel the same way, some of the balances that we have to do. But, but, but I absolutely agree, we should probably get you out there and any other counselor that would like to go look at their ward.
And then another thing, too, in terms of informing a, a neighborhood or a community that has not been held accountable for twenty, thirty years, and now we are. Maybe we could do Cliff Notes or something of the, the typical ordinances, you know, that are violations so that they actually understand that if, you know, let your dog poop in somebody else's yard.
That's a great suggestion, the neighborhood awareness. I mean, we're making a lot of investments, you know, corner to corner in this wonderful city. We really are. And we're trying to do a lot of redevelopment with the CRA and some older areas and the like. And to that extent, um, we have to continue to have our, our community residents understand what we're trying to do, why we want to do it, and how we plan on doing it. And I think generally, most residents are like, good, we want to up the game, keep things looking good, keep our community, um, uh, safe and, and pretty and, and, and nice and everything. And that's what we're trying to do.
Block by block?
Yeah.
Block kind of educational situation?
I, I think one of the reasons why I'm up here is I'm trying to explain to you that we are taking a serious approach to code enforcement a little bit more. And, and, and your point, Councilwoman Coachman, is well-taken. I've noticed that there's absolutely been a historical kind of legacy of, of, it seems like in some enforcement and then drops off a little bit, and then some enforcement and it drops off. And, um, we try to, you know, we, we've been trying to plus up the game. We do intend to submit our budget with an additional position. Uh, Mr. Reese's staff is now working on weekends. We're getting metrics, reports, and data. This nice little thing here is the code enforcement notice that I wanted to show you. What I told Mr. Reese was, uh, the, the, the door hanger really doesn't work for a habitual, serious type offender. So what I wanted was a very tacky adhesive on the back of this so that when you go and you put it on the, the door of the house, that the person can't take the door hanger and go like that in the trash. And it says specific things that I wanted in there about, please, the properties in violation of city, city codes and you specify the code, please, please bring the violation into compliance within so many days. Violations are subject to monetary fines up to and including judicial foreclosure, which is this list I have. It is your responsibility as a property owner to keep the property recorded in your name with the tax collector and up to city code standards. It's their responsibility as the property owner. Those are three important advisements to tell people, I think. It's simple, straightforward.
Giving them a chance without penalty.
Absolutely.
And I like that you're using that format because in the past, we've been using the same form that's kind of intimidating, you know, we, and, and, and it's received differently. Whereas that is worded kind of like, no, this is just a warning. And I think even the other form we, we've used as a warning, but it doesn't look like a warning.
Right.
It doesn't speak as a warning. So I like that.
And keeping the friendly city beautiful.
I like, yeah.
Little public awareness. So we're trying to gradually improve our, our delivery of code enforcement services and bring about, um, ultimately a, a cleaner, um, more compliant type city that's on code enforcement. If I could just move on to a couple of other.
Ms. Coker?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Actually, I, I want to kind of talk about the shopping center at Seventy-Fifth Street in Manatee. Um, I don't know, we've kind of reached out and gotten word from Manatee Memorial that they're going to be starting construction soon because we're having a problem with overnight campers in cars and stuff there and people just sleeping under tarps. Um, and I was over there yesterday, saw several, and there was a sheriff deputy sitting right there. I guess he didn't even scare them off. So, but the, so we reached out to them about it. But there's a fence that goes behind there between Village Green and it is in really bad disrepair, just as bad, if not worse, than what we saw from the other people out at Gecko's. So there's a wood fence that's falling over in disrepair. So I don't know whose responsibility it is, but, um, it definitely needs to be addressed. And maybe, I don't know if that'd be Manatee Memorial, I don't know who owns the shopping center, but.
We'll follow up with it.
Is there, there's a wall?
I was gonna say it's concrete block wall.
There's a wall, but there's also wood fence, too. They're on both, both sides, I think. The worst part was closer to the Village Green Parkway.
Okay, we'll set Mike out tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Perry?
And didn't, out of a, out, out, out of the abundance of, of lack of time, basically, I won't go into it, but we have the foreclosed property list as well, and that's been a, a high issue. And if you look at this list, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. You can see that basically we don't foreclose on, on a lot of the properties, even though we send a notice and things like that. We try to settle them and, and get a good outcome of compliance and, and having the landowner handle the problem and then basically negotiate a resolution that brings the property into compliance. And if there are fines, negotiate the amount of the fines. I mean, a lot of these are fairly significant reductions in the fines. It's only the ones that are more historical, that have been there for years, that we've been really moving after. So just wanted to touch on that.
Yeah, one, one quick question on that, Mr. Reese. I was on the council when we kind of changed policy with that.
Seventy-five thousand dollar limit?
Yeah, because we had some that were way up and we wanted to try to come up with a plan. Do you think what we did back then has made it easier? And, because I read through that whole list and I see we, a lot of it, we will settle for an amount because again, it's not about the punishment, it's about compliance. And we're trying to get people. So has that worked in the way that you anticipated when we did that several years ago?
Yes, I, I think it has made an impact because, um, if, first of all, it, it makes it clear to everyone that this is not about money. The city, we have no interest in getting three hundred thousand dollars for you for an overgrown lot. And the second thing is, as a practical matter, if somebody doesn't comply with, uh, uh, if a fine is seventy-five thousand dollars, they're not going to comply as if it's seventy-five million dollars either. It's just, it, it's, it, it was kind of an arbitrary kind of number that we came up with. I, I think it's workable. And another thing is we are well in line with other jurisdictions who have done that. Because jurisdictions got in trouble, uh, there, there is a problem and lawyers will know that more than I do, that there is a problem if the punishment doesn't fit the crime. If I fine somebody eight hundred thousand dollars for not cutting the grass, you may have a, I'm not saying a constitutional problem, but the punishment really doesn't fit the crime or the, you know.
Sanction.
A sanction. So it's, I think we're well, we're, we're, it, it has really worked and we should keep it.
Well, I think, um, I won't use the terminology that Miss Barnaby doesn't like, but I think that's helped and I really see it in Ward four because we had a, a person that called me early on that owned a lot of properties that were in disrepair that, you know, he paid quite a bit of fine money, but also cleaned up his properties. So, and it's by our Riverwalk East in Mineral Springs. And I drive by there quite a bit to look and, and it has, you know, changed mindset. And that was the goal, not only the punishment part of it, but to change the mindset. And, uh, it, it has been good to see that it finally is working and it's workable for our staff to make it happen. So.
Right.
I think Mr. Perry talking to him has kind of helped, too.
Yeah, we had, we had some frequent flyers, basically. They had multiple properties and they were very non-compliant. And, uh, after they made, in, in most cases, significant payments, uh, they have taken their property responsibilities a little bit more earnestly. Yep. Uh, so we're having success. And, and I think part of that success, too, is a combination of, of the model that we use with the department, our, our councils that handles this for us, and also highly the magistrate. I got to give her credit. The special magistrate I've sat in those meetings, um, she gives them due process. Notice, opportunity be heard, presentation of the, the facts and, and ultimately, you know, the, the authority of the administrative action that's taken. And I think she's very fair. That's been, and, and also focusing on compliance and, and sympathetic to circumstances, but at the same time assuring responsibility and accountability for the property ownership. I, I think she does a really good job.
Very good.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. I just.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reese.
Yeah, thank you, Volker. I wanted to just touch on one other issue quickly about planning, which is the, um, the permitting process. And I know I've received, uh, complaints from some counselors, I guess is a polite way to put it, um, concern and the like. And, uh, we're, we've got a high, high hill to climb in this regard. And, uh, we are implementing some software solutions that should assist us significantly. It's going to take a little bit of time before the full implementation of the. It's going to take a little bit of time before the full implementation of the, the, the permitting ERP, um, software, training and, and integration of, of legacy data and a whole host of other things occur. You were probably talking about a year. But, uh, the, the whole thing with permitting is that it's, it's a business process. It starts with an initiation of an application, basically, or inquiry and the like. And it goes through ultimately to the point where there's a permit issued. And we want that to happen within a reasonable people period of time. Roof permits have come up recently. We're coming into hurricane season. You would think that the city would focus and say, if we're coming into hurricane season, we ought to be prepared for hurricanes. Being prepared for hurricanes is making sure that roofs are in place and the like. And so I got some concerns and inquiries from councils about some delays that were associated with some of the, the roof permits. And, and there's other permits as well. We, we're, we're trying to work through the business process issue and, and implement the software. I would get inquiries about, from counselors about, well, can't you just do these over the counter? And I issued a request from staff at, at planning to find out how some of the other surrounding jurisdictions do that. And there's, it was an interesting response is that, well, over the counter means that if you come in, you get it over the counter. But the vast majority of the applications come in basically in an email system. They're not on a platform that can be put together. And so when it comes in as an email, you have to handle the email. And sometimes there's three of the things missing. When you talk about roof permits, you're talking about type of material, how much square footage and pitch as well as the licensed contractor. If you have those components, you pretty much got what's required for a roof pump, uh, permit. If it isn't structural, it's just for a re-roof, for replacement, re-roof and things. So it, it, it would come in as an email and maybe perhaps it wouldn't have one of the, the items on there or the like. And, uh, that, that email then would have to be entered into our MUNIS system manually. It doesn't just go into a platform. And then they'd be emailed back and forth and, you know, we need this and the other person sending that. And so you'd have a multitude of communications that are going really in, in today's world, that's, that's a snail system because it goes back and forth. We're trying to improve that both as a matter of business process, as well as a matter of, you know, through our administrative processes and reviewing and staffing and good management and accountability and providing data on how successful we are and measuring success and things like that. That's what we're trying to do. It's going to take a little bit of time. Would you like to add anything to this?
Um, if you like.
Sure, sure.
I think part of the issue is that we didn't have any kind of, other than, um, uh, the platform of MUNIS to enter in permits and take care of inspections. Um, we didn't really have anything going until the pandemic hit. And then all of a sudden, we were scrambling, trying to figure out how to address permits electronically so people didn't have to physically come in. Even during the pandemic, uh, people were dropping off paper permits in the alcove, um, out front and, and we were taking those in and processing them in that way. So, uh, there's two steps to the process. And the first step, which starts this Friday, is an electronic permit review process, um, which is one we're going to continue to use even once we implement the second part of the process. Uh, but it, uh, it allows for faster review and, and electronic review of the permits. Uh, and it's also, we've added on the GoPost is what it's called, is, um, an, an input system where the contractor can sit in their office, have one of their staff members upload the permits. So instead of getting an email, which we have to decipher between, we get hundreds of emails into the system, and we're trying to decipher what kind of email it is. Are they just submitting revisions? Are they submitting a new permit? Are they just saying thank you? Are they, you know, are they asking questions? Are they responding to comments? And so doing it this way, when they have to do is submit a revision, they'll be able to go into the same system, to the same permit number and upload the revisions. And so it'll all be taken in as part of that process. It is going to be a little bit of a learning curve though. We, we're starting it this Friday. We are not going to, I don't think our development community would appreciate us just saying, nope, you have to submit it into the system right now. Because we have contractors who maybe mostly do business in other counties or with Manatee County, um, so, and they may only come to us a few times a year. So we want to make sure that we do this helpfully, um, gently, if you will, um, and, and try to ease them into the service. And we're going to be helping them scan plans at the front counter if they're coming in with paper permits. Uh, we're also trying to expedite, um, on anything that can be held as an overcounter permit, uh, to do those more quickly. So, um, there'll be a little bit of growing pains, but we're hopeful that what we're starting this Friday is, is going to be immensely helpful, uh, to our ability to process these more quickly and get things moving through a, a lot faster. But, um, a little bit of a learning curve, as he said, but for the contracting community, I think staff is well-trained at this point. Uh, and I do appreciation to administration because they helped us get in some temporary employees, which we've been able to train. Again, a little bit of growing pains. We had some vacancies. Um, but we've gotten some new people in who have worked out very well. And, uh, we're, uh, hoping to offer them permanent positions. Uh, and now they're trained, uh, both in the new system as well as the existing system. So we think that, that's really going to help us, um, get along a lot smoother in this transition period. The Acela part of the process, it's going to be another year. Um, and that's, it's going to be a little bit of a change too, but I think most of the contractor, uh, community is familiar with it already, uh, dealing with it at Manatee County. Uh, and that'll make things just a little bit quicker, um, but it, it's actually going to help us quite a bit, um, when that comes through. So we're, I think about sixty percent through on our input process for that. Um, and so data conversion is going to be a big chunk of what happens between now and, and the following year.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Singer? All right.
I mean, I guess, I, I think by, I, I don't know how you, you know, your, your side of the process. I've only been on this side of the counter. And it just seems like there's a few, like, low hanging fruit. Um, no, I mean, the fence permit, I mean, it took me four days of review for a fence and I was hooking from one to another. And, and just to me, that seemed, I, those four days could have been spent doing somebody's windows that are trying to get hurricane windows in. So I'm hoping we're working through that.
Yes.
And even the roofs, I mean, you, you mentioned pitch and stuff. If it's your, you're replacing an existing roof, are you making someone change the pitch?
No, no. I think when we're dealing with roof permits and the over the counter permits, if you're just changing the sheathing, you're just pulling it off, that's an over the counter permit usually. But if you put it into an email process where we're getting hundreds of emails, that's, that's where it gets kind of stuck.
And I think explaining that to them.
Yeah.
Might help.
Yeah.
Because of course I've been, I've been getting a lot of the calls and, um, and I don't know what to tell them because I just can't explain sometimes why. But, um, the email part, uh, maybe is not the way to go for them.
Right. And I think the, the key component to the new system is that when they enter it, when they upload it, they're going to tell us what kind of permit it is.
Okay.
That, that's going to help us pick out those ones that.
Okay.
Handle more quickly.
Okay. Good.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of the things that I don't think any of us saw coming was the fact that when we got the information from our insurance companies, that unless we changed and, and got a new roof, they were not going to cover us. That's happened throughout the city, throughout the county, throughout the state. And that is causing a lot of concerns. Um, one of the other issues that I have seen and I've had to deal with personally is contractors telling their clients that, oh, I'm, I'm waiting, you know, I'm waiting to hear back from the city or I can't get the permit or I'm waiting on the permit. And I know of two people that reached out to me personally and when I went down to check the permit, they, they had not turned anything in to begin with. They might have been overscheduled and they're blaming us. So I want to make people aware of that.
We're, we're aware of that phenomena and, uh, and it, it's not, it doesn't do us any good to try to point a finger, in my opinion. I think that occurs, and I talked with Robin about it this week, actually. And I don't want to speak for Robin, but in paraphrase it, it, it occurs, but it's, it's not that frequent. And, and, and it's a good point. I mean, between material shortages and labor shortages and other issues, I know a lot of contractors, they take on more work to put it on the book, not having the availability, deliver it in a timely manner. And we might have a little bit of that going on, but be mindful of it. And if I could just wrap up a couple of things, I, I just want to point out that, that Robin and her team have been very responsive. Um, Zelda Bryant, who's now the permitting division director, she, she works tirelessly and she's sharp and, and, and she's engaged and she's positive and passionate about getting some of these issues, uh, repaired if they, if, if they need that and remediated. Um, and, and the rest of the management team down there, they, they work hard. We have a meeting every Monday morning, starts with an agenda and it turns into this, which is notes about the meeting. And it's probably not the most pleasant meeting that Ms. Singer has of the week. But, but, but we try to address, you know, these problems head on. And, and, and my hat goes off to them for an earnest, honest and, and thoughtful effort to do that. So I didn't mean to criticize anybody or anything at the department. I just think we're trying to manage some fairly sticky issues that are legacy, that are modern day and, and otherwise. And ultimately, there are issues that reflect back on you as elected officials. And we understand that. And we're, we want to get it remediated and, 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 and very effective and, and being a premier service delivery.
Yeah. And I would say when you receive complaints, I mean, we're here to help. We, we are not looking to, uh, point the finger, you know, on those rare cases where somebody is, you know, trying to blame the city, but they just haven't gotten around to it. When I talk to the contractor, they're perfectly nice about it. You know, ironically, they're, you know, but, but I'd like the opportunity to talk to people because maybe something has gotten lost in the system and I want to be able to find it for them. And I understand that chances are it's a homeowner that's complaining to you because they've heard something from their contractor and it's, that's how it's getting passed through the system. But if I can have that opportunity to talk to the contractor, we can resolve a lot of these issues. Um, so, you know, we're, we're here to help and we, we definitely want to hear about it when you're hearing about problems in the system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Perry?
Moving on. Uh, before, I'm going to need some formal action on this. We have on the agenda under new business, uh, the formal, um, introduction of the inter-local government agreement with Manatee County regarding the water taxi. I believe that has been provided, um, as well as an amended version that cleaned up some legal verbiage. It really didn't substantively change too much in there. But, uh, I think council is aware of the county's efforts on the water taxi. Um, and it's a pretty cool project. It's funded by the TDC. Uh, it has a lot of benefits as far as relieving traffic congestion potentially, um, inner, interconnectivity, um, between Palmetto and, and, and the city of Bradenton, ultimately the beach communities and the like, um, provides additional recreational services, leisure and recreational services. And we're really excited about participating in it. Our part is basically making the, um, the day dock have, have an ability to unload, offload, um, and ultimately, uh, store the overnight mooring of, of the two boats that'll be involved. I believe it's two.
Two, yes.
Yeah. And, um, with that, the inter-local government agreement basically says that we have this agreement between the parties being the municipal governments of the beach communities, uh, where it lands and the city of Bradenton. And, uh, also that the day dock would be utilized. They can utilize that. Any cost of, uh, having to remodel the dock to accommodate the, the boat. Um, and the pier itself would be borne by the county. The termination provisions are in there basically that allow there to be, um, short termination if, if the city so desired in the future and the like. But we're looking forward to a successful relationship on the project. And, uh, I think it's cool. I know a lot of people on the, on our council have, uh, have been introduced to it and heard Elliot and some of the folks from the county talk about it and, uh, have pretty good feelings about it. So we're looking forward to kind of getting something done on it. And I believe service starts around, I think, looking at July.
Soon, yeah. Um, I think one of the, the benefits, and we're not going to see it as quick as we'd like because of the construction that's going to be going on over the next couple of years, um, at the convention center and, and that. And I think, you know, we're going to have the downtown as that convention center grows where it'll be kind of the, the water taxi to the island. And then at night, it'll turn into the river water taxi that will bounce back and forth and around the river. Will be an opportunity to really highlight where people won't have to get in the car and go over either bridge. They'll be able just to go back and forth and.
That's a huge plus, I think. You know, if you haven't been over the convention center and talked to the developers and, and, uh, convention center staff itself, Elliot's group that is looking at doing a renovation of the convention center, let alone the hotel, it is an awesome, um, uh, addition to the community. And it, it will provide a lot of other opportunities to showcase our community, to bring economic development in, and how cool that you can go over to Palmetto in about ten minutes to get over to here and go to our beautiful downtown and Riverwalk and the like. And I think you're right, Mayor, that it's going to bring a whole new dimension of traveler, um, and utilization of our, our, of our beautiful downtown area.
Well, our number one, um, everyday events are traffic. So anytime we can work on that, you know, it's going to help. So.
So I asked for a.
So we would need a motion to approve the inter-local agreement with Manatee County.
Mr. Mayor.
Regarding the water taxi. Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion to approve the inter-local agreement with Manatee County regarding the water taxi dockage. I believe is this.
That's water.
That is it.
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Um, how do we, I think it's maybe for Mr. Rudisso. How do we, do we have to worry about any obligations from Anna Maria or Bradenton Beach municipalities regarding their obligations with the peers that it goes to?
In, in what respect? I mean, the, the only, my recollection is the only way that they're incorporated into this is that if we don't have service to all of those municipalities, then we have the ability to terminate the agreement.
Okay. So we don't need to worry about them maintaining anything or anything? We just terminate if it's not working out with those points of drop off?
That's correct. Yeah. The only, the, the city's obligation and, and just to take a step back, the county's going to make improvements to the dock. And before they do that, they have to bring forward a plan that's going to be approved by the city council. Once they make those improvements, it is the city's obligation to maintain the dock as it does now. Um, but, but beyond that, the city doesn't have any obligations.
All right. Hearing nothing else, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries four to zero. Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of final matters. Um, I wanted to bring everybody up to hurricane preparedness. We started to talk about that under the planning subject. But, uh, we have been, when I say we, the, our, our public safety agencies, both police and fire, um, have been, been very, um, engaged in getting prepared for hurricane season. We learned a lot from last year and years past even. Um, and we're brushing off and, 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 and really, really fine tuning, um, some, some training right now coming into the season. Um, we actually had, I want to say about twenty-five people attend the, the three hundred and four hundred series, um, FEMA training. And, and it was much more than just police and fire. It involved a lot of our administrative staff too. Um, because we have to look at this in terms of preparedness, uh, rescue, recovery and, and continuity thereafter. We dodged a bullet last year, but the one thing about luck is it runs out at some point. And, um, you know, we, we learned a lot because we came close. And, and I think we also learned that we need to be even more prepared, uh, for, for the storm, for the, the ensuing, um, phases that come after it as it relates to emergency management. I appreciate the support you all have provided regarding the P SAC, um, project. That's going to be very important to this overall undertaking. We won't start construction on that until after the hurricane season. And we would utilize it if another similar event like Ian occurs. Public Works does a great job. Um, they have been intricately involved in a multitude of their divisions and have responsibility both before and after the storm, before, during and after. And, uh, they did that during Ian. Uh, you, many of you work with them and saw them working. And my hat goes off to all those folks. And, uh, we're trying to make sure that what we learned from Ian um, is, is heated and that we're well-prepared, both from a policy, personnel and program perspective. That's what we're trying to do. We've had two citywide meetings already. We'll, we'll have a third next week and continue on through. And, um, again, to all the, the chiefs and, and direct department directors and division directors, I think they have really, um, answered the bell. And, and I'm proud to work with them and, and I think we are as ready as we, we reasonably can be, um, for this hurricane season. So I wanted to touch on that. There was an additional issue regarding, I just want to let you know about the Performing Arts Center. And we have an agreement with the Performing Arts Center. And there's some opportunities, some economic opportunities, uh, that are coming up and the development opportunities. And there's an annual payment related to, to, uh, some, some land use. And I'd been asked to, if I could. And I'd been asked to, if I could defer that until a later date, and I'm probably looking at about 90 days to allow myself and the appropriate people to evaluate the economic development proposal that's being put forth. And at that point, consider some concessions, incentives and other kind of realignment of the revenues associated with that. To that extent, I just want to let you know, I think I have administrative authority to do that and I'll give you a further report in the future about it. And lastly, I appreciate everybody looking at those evaluations and getting those complete. We'll be doing the same for our staff. And we have budget coming up and budget's working, our budget staff is working really hard. Revenues look good. Expenses are always increasing, as we all know, both from the labor, materials, supplies, equipment and the like. Supply chain shortages still exist significantly and the like. And we're just trying to work through those challenges. But we are going to be giving you guys, submitting preliminary budget information very shortly, coming into the budget submission season into August and ultimately having our budget hearings in September.
Any questions for Mr. Perry at this moment? All right, moving on to unfinished business. I don't know if it's really unfinished, but I just have a comment about the TDC meeting last Monday. And I was on and heard everything. I know Karen did a great job getting up and talking about her stuff with Realized Bradenton through that. But our big thing was obviously City Park. There's been some very misinformed people out there that we have not brought this up to the council. It has been brought up at a couple of meetings to the council. It was brought up, obviously, Mr. Perry and I met with all seven county commissioners to give them an update on the City Park. And the TDC did unanimously vote to put it to the county commission of a $5 million over three-year recommendation. So that will go on their first meeting back from break. So that's very exciting because that is probably the catalyst that we've been looking for to really start the next part of not only City Park and LECOM, all of that area, but as well as to go into the next Ninth Street Corridor, Village of the Arts, obviously, all of the neighborhood there that, you know, is in Ward five that can basically start the growth to the north, which then connects the city together.
Right, and the NPL baseball study.
Everything with that, with the Ninth Street Corridors, you know, with that. So, and again, it's about what we do from corner to corner. And some corners seem like they've been maybe neglected a little bit. But this is, I really, truly in my heart believe this is the staple that starts that growth to really make us a one city. Instead of kind of, and it's something that in 2012, you know, I said, when I became involved in government and running for city council seat in 2012, if we had LECOM, Village of the Arts and the city of Bradenton all along our Riverwalk, it would be easy. But we don't. So we've got to try to figure out ways to connect in a walkability way and make you want to walk. You know, there's been other cities. When I went to Pittsburgh last year, my wife and I walked about seven miles on a Saturday morning. Didn't know we walked seven miles when we were done, but because there was stuff that just kept you going. So, and that's how we have to, I believe, work it. So I just want people to know that that is processing. And, you know, like I said, it has been discussed and it's moving forward with a lot of others because we actually have legislative money that hopefully will be coming, you know, as well as federal money, as well as school board, county philanthropy that's going to do a lot in the area, so.
Great partnership and great opportunity.
Just kind of an update on that through the TDC as a TDC member, so. And, okay, so that's kind of the, any other unfinished business?
Not really. I mean, I think you can look forward to next, you know, probably towards the end of this year. Construction's starting on Fire Station Two. The PSLAC, as I talked about, December probably after hurricane season and perhaps some other capital projects. So we'll start seeing stuff coming out of the ground. And I think, you know, we've been working hard. I know everybody's been working hard at different levels, the staff and admin and certainly council. But I think over the next several years, if we keep our nose to the grindstone, we're going to see really good things come in City Park and a whole host of other things. The city center development, the potential is just unbelievable.
Perfect.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, we'll move on to council reports and we'll start in Ward five.
Well, wow. I just want to kind of tag on what we were just speaking of. It is extremely exciting. I didn't sleep last night because I was kind of thinking about all the things that are possible and so much of it that will impact the area I represent. Well, the area, I'm the go-to person because I represent the entire city. But it's just exciting to see the connectivity, the possibilities of connectivity and just uplifting an area that the low hanging fruit and the upper hanging fruit are going to be taken care of. So it's just really exciting. The notes that I had made to talk about, it kind of started on, it's going to start out kind of on a sour note, but it's going to end in a better note. We're kind of losing ground a little bit in Ward five in terms of some of the complaints I get from citizens about our park, Love Park especially. But, you know, it's just one of those unfortunate things that's going on all over the country. And Bradenton's no different. But I assured them that we're going to continue to do the best we can to keep that park as safe as we can. And looking forward to lifting that up a bit too. A lot of changes, a lot of movement, a lot of taking us from one century to the next. And that's a positive thing. And staff, I often have to interact with staff because of calls I get from citizens. And I have yet to ever be disappointed in the response. You know, you guys are just awesome. Every last one of you from the top all around. And of course, our first responders stay busy too. And just, I don't know, I guess I'm just feeling so appreciative right now. But before I say Ward five is alive, I'm going to also remind everyone that this Saturday will be the annual Juneteenth celebration at the 13th Ave Dreams Center as it was last year. And this year, I think it's going to start a little later in the day from one to six. There's going to be something going on Friday, but it's kind of more children-oriented and it'll be in two different spots. But Saturday is the best time to come out and celebrate, you know, the entire community. Celebrate the time when at least on paper, every American was free, had become free. So I hope I see many of you. If not, I know you'll be there in spirit. Ward five's alive.
Thank you. Ward one.
Not much today, other than today is Flag Day, as you mentioned at the beginning. And just to kind of tell everybody, this is the day that we celebrate the June 14th to remember when the Continental Congress introduced our country's flag. So I just wanted to celebrate that today. I hope, I know the heat is on. Everybody's hot. I hope they're staying safe out there. I'm going to start my drumbeat on something and this is something that I've mentioned to some people. But the saltwater intrusion into the west side, into our wells for irrigation is really serious. And people are going to have to get off wells and get onto potable water to sprinkle their yards. And I think it's going to become a bigger issue down the road. So I would like to start the drumbeat on working on getting reclaimed water. I know we have the reclaimed water, but it's all going east. So I don't, I know it's a big, big undertaking, but I got to start somewhere. And so I just want to start my drumbeat now and put it out there because I think, I think I'm ahead of, I think we're ahead of crisis. And so I don't want to wait until it is a crisis because using potable water to sprinkle yards is going to become, I think, more and more critical as we grow. And so I just want to start looking for ways, you know, maybe there's grant money out there. I don't know what the answer is, but I do want to start making a push for it, so.
Yeah, just real quick to that, I think one of the things that the county has really a lot of the reclaimed lines throughout the area of West Bradenton, and that's what we probably, I mean, I know at our funeral home, we're in the city, but we have the reclaim from the county. So, because the pipe goes right down 43rd.
And if I'm not mistaken, it's actually our reclaimed water that's going through county pipes? No.
No, we have, it's their reclaim.
Okay, okay.
So there may be opportunity to do, you know, public...
Mayor, if I could just address...
I know there's people smarter than me.
Yeah, Jim's the guy that's the smartest guy in the room on it. There's no doubt about it. But I agree with you that the water intrusion, and I think there's also going to be a, there's going to be a need to really look at conservation of potable water. Hence, for secondary irrigation purposes and the like, the purple pipe, which is the recycle. We have our own system. It's advanced water. It's actually better treated water, is what Jim told me. The quality of the recycle. And that's one of the reasons why we sell it to the Lakewood Ranch area, basically, under that agreement. But the county is taking some initiatives and it's kind of, you know, it's probably a very good time to convene some thought between us working with the county in order to expand our purple pipe capacities and connectivities as well. And, you know, I don't think we can do it alone because it's such an expensive undertaking, but we could probably talk about a decent partnership and maybe how to do it. And it's probably a good time to start that dialogue and conversation. And I would just defer to Jim for everything beyond that.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Did you have something?
I just wanted to say Happy Father's Day to all those that step in that role. And you don't have to be a biological man to be a father, so just Happy Father's Day.
Yeah, Happy Father's Day. Yeah, and all the dads up here and out there.
All right, Ward two, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We seem to have a, I don't know, a plethora of people misunderstanding what goes into our recycle bins and what needs to not go in our recycle bins and what needs to not be left at the recycle bins because it constitutes illegal dumping. And I am very concerned about it. I've had conversations with people throughout Ward two that want to see the bins stay and want to do the right thing with recycling. But somewhere there's a disconnect. And people are dropping inappropriate things in those big blue bins that have all the notifications in the world on them, as well as dropping things like construction debris and old furniture and the...
Garbage.
Well, I, I have not had the people complain about garbage, but I have had people complain about construction debris, old furniture, things like the long light bulbs and leaving them there. And not only is that inappropriate, it is illegal dumping. And a child could get injured thinking that that's a great lightsaber when it's not. So I'm not sure exactly where to go with this. But I would just, a personal plea, please, please do not do that.
We've been talking about it. Mr. McClellan could elaborate on that?
Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Yeah, we've been working through with solid waste. We're having conversations with BPD to try and arrive at some unique ways to try and address the illegal dumping that's going on. We're working on a program. We've, Mr. Perry had the stickers before for code enforcement. We're working on a similar one that we'll put out related to offering a reward for folks who, if they report somebody doing illegal dumping and it leads to an arrest, that there's a reward associated with it. Unfortunately, you know, I'm fearful that it might get worse before it gets better because the county is about to change its solid waste. And their bulk item costs are going to go up. And my fear is you're going to start to see some of that. So we're trying to be ahead of it before that hits later this fall.
One of the things that obviously we can try to figure out is cameras. You know, because with technology today, you know, you video that person doing it.
Yeah. And we've put some cameras out at some locations and the cameras get stolen.
Put them pretty high in the sky.
We got to figure out a different way to do it than having them, so that is part of our process and we are working on a solution.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I will talk as well while I'm up here, just real quick about the reclaim component. The one thing that you may not realize is, Mr. Perry indicated that our reclaimed water is treated to a different standard than Manatee County's. Are, all of the water treated at the plant is treated to what's considered advanced wastewater treatment, meaning we remove nitrogen and phosphorus. Nitrogen and phosphorus are the exact components that people want for fertilizer to enhance their lawns. And we send our reclaimed water to a portion of Lakewood Ranch that is within the watershed of our reservoir that we use for drinking water. If Manatee County were to put their reclaimed water that is not advanced treatment, it would threaten the reservoir. So the fact that we send our reclaimed water to Lakewood Ranch, sell it to them, by the way, is a conservation measure for us to preserve the integrity of our reservoir. So I just wanted you to be aware of that component of it.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, I also wanted to express my sympathy to the family of Doug Stivers. Many of us remember when the chop shop opened and that was Mr. Stivers. So again, just express sympathy and keeping the Stivers family and our thoughts and prayers. And as Ms. Coachman reminded us, it is Father's Day this weekend. And many times you have different people who step into that role, whether they're male or female, whether they're related or not. I just want to give a shout out to my husband because I think he is a very good father. And I had to laugh because my son is on a trip in Texas. And he did this Facebook post that said, "In the continued adventures of my parents have brainwashed me into taking my family to state capitals and/or dead people's houses because that's what we did on vacation as kids." Funny story, if we were anywhere near a state capital, we took the kids to see the state capital because it's, they're all very different and they're all very interesting. And then the joke became whenever we would go to a historic building, you know, what dead people's house do we have to see today kind of thing. But my oldest son is now 34 and he's still doing that. So, Mark, you did a great job.
Thank you. Ward four, Ms. Moore?
I, on a similar vein to both the mayor and Councilwoman Barnaby, we just returned from vacation, my family, and we spent some time in Boston. I shared pictures of, some images with both Mr. Perry and Ms. Farmer with the CRA, with some pocket parks and public art. It's walkability of cities. Our family is very similar. We go to a city. We don't, you know, try to avoid renting a car and just walk for hours. And I really believe that's the way you get to know a city. So I'm very much looking forward to our city similarly becoming walkable and all those exciting things. I do plan to attend Juneteenth with you this weekend, so I'm looking forward to that with my family as well. One thing I wanted to mention, similar to Vice Mayor Coker, if I could get my screen working, getting ahead of things. I wanted to take this opportunity, staff was fantastic, finance department, to meet with each of us. with each of us. I was one of the last ones because I was out of town. And so I just wanted to share with council what I reflected to, by way of background, the purpose of the meeting was to figure out what maybe my priorities were as they pursue the budgeting process. I appreciated that opportunity. I've had some informal conversations with Mr. Williams previously about that kind of thing, but I, I think this meeting was pretty productive. So to share with you all, I reflected that my priorities were based on public input, so that included infrastructure projects for East Bradenton. Mr. McClellan and I have had many conversations about the plans that he has for that area, and they're all very exciting. So I'm looking forward to that being, you know, a part of our budgeting conversation. The recycling program also is something that I've been hearing about, and in particular, and I've mentioned this, Mr. McClellan, I do think that they're bad actors with the furniture and whatnot, and I use 22nd as an example because that was actually going so well that I was getting calls about adding a bin or more frequent pickups. And then I get back from vacation, and all of a sudden the emails are, "There are couches, there's a mattress." And so I think that people are identifying and targeting locations and then coming in from the outside and, you know, mucking up the program. So I agree that some enforcement will need to be looked at, and so that is something that I hope we can address. Housing and redevelopment projects, as you all know, I serve on the Affordable Housing Committee, so I'm hoping that we can kind of use what the state just recently, the legislation that they adopted, to fund their rental and down payment assistance programs to see how our city can benefit from that. And, and this one is kind of a big one, and of course, it's a more stickier one because I think it overlaps departments. It is the cleanup of the homeless camps. So I know that we're trying to address the homelessness issue. It's a real, like, it's like chasing, you know, that elusive solution because there really isn't one. But putting that aside, it's just the cleanup and how that affects the quality of life of everyone else. So I get a lot of calls about people that will, you know, that are aware of a camp. There's two in particular that are problematic in Ward Four. And that's the area behind River Isles and the area behind Three Keys. And the issue I think that we're having is that there's a code enforcement component. If it's private property, there is a police response that has to be required because staff can't go in if there's weapons and drug paraphernalia and active people living in the camp. And then there's waste removal and pickup. And so I would like to see us try to figure out some kind of interdepartmental solution where we can have the, you know, some, on the, like, boom, 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 the police go have to, you know, relocate the individuals, make sure that there's no drug paraphernalia or weapons that are dangerous, so that then maybe we can somehow clean up, and then we can pick up what we then clean up. So I know that there's that. It's not an easy task, but it is something that I think unfortunately, until we can try to figure out what we're going to do with the increasing homelessness population, we have to figure out a way to not have it so adversely affect the quality of life of residents. So that was one of my big, how do we fund, how do we deal with that? I don't know if it's completely appropriate because we are not, this is not a notice CRA meeting, but I think, I'll just mention as council that I think that that is a component of how we address our budgeting process and what we can budget for. And then my final thing was, in my, in my absence, there was some confusion about a public works project in River Isles, and I just wanted to let everyone know that after that, the good news is that staff has, you know, committed to focusing on advertising and communicating with the community when there's going to be a more expansive project in the area so that people can be aware of any potential problems they might be having in connection with a construction or other public works project. And I think, Happy Father's Day.
And I'll echo some of the homeless and the different things we're trying to do in our city, and a lot of it's in the urban core that, you know, drives them to that. And you made a statement that says, "We've got to relocate, that's the problem." We can run them off, but, you know, and then again, it's got to come back to the trespass. That's why we put a trespass in years ago. So some of that is, that's something we talk about probably right up there with traffic, you know, and going from that. So, so it is something. We knew, talking about the recycling, we kind of knew that this was one of those things that could happen, took longer than we thought, maybe, but, you know, with, with all of the county, Palmetto, Bradentons, you know, we do our own, so our garbage is a little bit, probably a little bit more stable, but with the county and Palmetto, with the contracts that are coming up, there's going to be some issues that I think will be addressed. And I know the county thought they could work through something, but I think they're actually trying to extend it a year to get a little more time, but cutting back on pickup, cutting back on cost and that, and we've kind of been through that. But I have seen the neighborhoods cleaner at times and people understanding it. So I don't think some of those landlords that were just evicting somebody and putting everything out front is happening as much as it did before. So it just seems like that. But one of the things that legislative, we talked a little bit about it, we've got about two more weeks before the governor has to hopefully sign everything or decide what he's going to do July 1st, so we're still, still in the hunt for a few things, and we hope those will go through. So if you can talk to anybody in the legislative part of it to keep that rah-rah going for that, it's important. One of the things we talked about even in planning, and I think it goes to all departments, that communication is key, and most of it is once somebody gets to us, they think they have the situation where a lot of it might have been able to be solved if, if the information was deciphered a little differently. And, you know, it's not that we're doing it wrong, but sometimes it's how you do it, and that may help us. And I've seen some of that picking up, so that's a good thing. But I think that's probably one of the biggest things is sometimes just answering the phone and talking to the person, but if they don't ask you the right question, you give them an answer, and then they said, "We told them wrong," but they really didn't ask the right question on certain things. So that's very important. But I know our staff is working hard, and obviously, especially for some of our public works and people that are, go outside, it's so hot. So, I mean, some of that makes a huge difference in what they do, and, and so we hope that everybody stays safe. And I did see our sanitation out doing some good things on Saturday, I think it was, some pictures, they did some extras, so kudos to all the staff that was there. And then on another Saturday a couple of weeks ago, was out picking up a few things that sit for months on the side of the roads, that is other people's barricades and cones and all that, and drop them off at the location that we do. And we had about six or eight of our public works guys packing sandbags. So I know we're, we're prepared for that, appreciate them doing that extra on a Saturday morning, so kudos to all of them. Jim, if you can pass it along, I don't, you know, I think there was six or eight of them, so I was proud, and it looks like we're pretty stocked up, and hopefully it stays stocked because we won't need them. But, and then I think one of the things that, you know, we talk about transportation a lot. As Vice Chair of the MPO at this moment, our chairman couldn't be there, so I got to chair the meeting, and really talk about a lot of good things and what's happening with our Ninth Street corridor that we're trying to really manage through and see how we can do in our downtown. What is maybe, you know, we can't change our grid very much because we're kind of landlocked, but is there little things we can do to help? So that's really being talked about and going through with, with all of the DOT, MPOs and all of that. But no, it's great, obviously, you know, talking about the Soto Bridge and, and, you know, that's the first step, capacity is the second step, so all of that's still being, being talked about through that, and it's, it's good, and, and just keep working through that. So that's all I've got. We'll go to department heads. Anyone want to jump up and say anything? Extra, Ms. Singer?
I just wanted to say Tamara Tornay, who was formerly our code enforcement officer, then moved up into plans examiner position, has now been promoted in, as the Assistant Building Official. So we're very happy about that. Will be then also filling her position, so we're becoming a little bit fuller staff, and it's going to help us in the long run in keeping up with building permits, but we're very happy to announce that her promotion in that. And I'm sorry, I didn't invite her here today, but you can stop by and say hi when, when you're in our offices. All right. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? Yes, sir.
Just want to make it known, we, I talked with the contractor this morning. They're hoping to remove the construction fence at Lewis Park so that we can do a soft opening for the two playground areas. We're still working on the forever lawn under the swing sets on the other side, but we can at least get that part open finally. So we'll work with Genies to get some announcements made out related to that and finish it up from here, so.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, just a couple of things, and some of them within Jim's bailiwick, but the Downtown Action Team is doing the plants out along the sidewalks. You may have seen them. And they're planning on bringing in additional vegetation with a lot of color and the like. It should look really nice when we're done. And they're doing it in phases, Zone One being down here in front of City Hall, and then moving south down, down Old Main Street. I think they're looking at about a two, three-week process to get it all done. Also, the big, big screen message center will, will be installed, I believe, tomorrow, and we'll be testing it thereafter. Early in the morning, I said no heavy metal or anything like that. We want, we want, we want to kind of beta test it a little bit before we implement anything. We'll, we'll put on the, is static messages, like free parking this direction with an arrow and the like. But yeah, that'll be getting installed. And I know there were some interested questions about the Main Street benches. They've been removed, some benches, and they've been removed to be refinished, and we'll figure out how to deploy them and otherwise. But if you have any questions, ask me about that later on, on the timeline.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I noticed the bike racks on Old Main, have they been switched out? I noticed a different one there because they were public art pieces, believe it or not, that were out there, and I, maybe it was just one that's been changed out, but it was not the, one of the art pieces, I know that.
Yeah, so when the, when the Streetscape project was done, the art ones, the red ones, were removed to facilitate the construction. They have been put back, but as part of the Streetscape project, there was a separate type of bike rack that was installed as part of the project, so you might see...
I saw some silver thing that was just like that.
Yeah. That was just part of the project itself.
But it's been there the whole time.
I just noticed it, maybe?
I don't think anything was just put in, no.
I just hadn't noticed it. I just noticed it the other day, and I was...
We added one a while back over across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but that was...
But that was one of the ones that had been removed, and we put, we put back in place.
I'd like to see some, a couple more in some strategic areas, because you see when sometimes they put the bikes to the tree.
I think they'll still do it, though.
But if there's one right next to it, they might not...
It's kind of like the crosswalks.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to go where they want.
All right, thank you. The only, only final comment I have is, and Mr. Perry and I have been talking, is about some of our projects in the different wards. I've asked him to look at really working with each councilperson in that ward and get with the project manager, maybe pre-construction, and set up some sort of format so you know what's going on in your ward timing-wise. So then it's, it's a matter of saying, "Okay, here's where we're at, here's where we do," because we know, and I'm just going to say the debacle we had on 33rd Street Court West, if we would have been up on that a little bit more, maybe some of that wouldn't have happened. But because, and that, that'll hopefully keep you more informed of what's going on in your ward, and it may, an extra meeting or two a month, but it's worth it to know what's happening from that construction manager, so. Appreciate that, and I think that's something maybe we start to implement in August, starting in August, coming back from break, so. But, all right, well, I appreciate it, and if you are going to do any traveling, enjoy, and we'll keep in communication. We'll be adjourned. Thank you.